I see.
And the public is welcome to, you know, send along any questions they might have and I'm sure we'll be happy to get them answered.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion at the October 27, 2020 special meeting of the Board of Alderman. Be in by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Milcher.
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and 0 nays.
And we are adjourned at 7:31 PM and our regular meeting will start in a minute. Thank you, everyone. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Sue Lovering and the pledge to the flag will be done by Alderman Dowd.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with the and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As President of the Board of Alderman, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access soon, please refer to the agenda or the city's website for the meeting link. To join by phone, dial 1-929-205-6099. The meeting ID, 811-6856-5211. And the passcode is 896-485. The public may also view the meeting on Channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashville's website at nashua-N A dot gov. Publicly noticed at City Hall and the Nashville Public Library. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call 603-821-2049 and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes taken that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
I am present. I can hear the proceedings and I'm home alone.
Alderman Cle.
I am here. I can hear the proceedings and I am alone.
Alderwoman Kelly.
She won't be joining us this evening.
Thank you. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I can hear everyone. I am home alone and practicing social distancing.
Alderman Karen.
I am here. I can hear everyone and I am alone.
Alderman Clemmons.
I am here. I can hear everyone and I am currently by myself, although my wife may come home during the meeting.
Alderman Lopez.
I'm here. I can hear and see everybody. I am home alone mostly. I have a cat, but he doesn't really participate.
Alderman Tenza.
I am present. I can hear everyone and I'm alone.
Alderwoman Lou.
I'm here alone and I can hear you.
Alderman Jettie.
I'm here. I can hear the proceedings and I'm staying safe.
Alderman Schmidt.
I am present and I am alone in the room.
Alderman Laws.
I'm here. I am alone and I can hear you.
Alderman Cleaver.
I'm here. I'm alone and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
I'm present. I can hear everyone and I'm practicing social distancing and I am in this room alone.
Alderman Milcher.
I'm here. I'm alone and I can hear everyone. I am practicing social distancing. Also with us this evening is Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Does the mayor wish to address the board this evening? You're on mute, Mayor.
Yes, Madam President. Thank you very much. I had a few things I wanted to speak with you about. The first is the election coming up on November 3rd, a week from today. We want everyone in Nashville to vote either by absentee or at the polling place, whichever they feel most comfortable with. The City Clerk, Sue Lovering, and all of the people working with her, her staff have done a tremendous job in processing a large amount of absentee ballots. People who would prefer the absentee approach to going to the polls for COVID-19 reasons and other reasons. The Sue Lovering and her staff have mailed out over 10,000 absentee ballots already and will be processing more between now and Election Day. They have opened the courts in addition to accepting absentee ballots and registering voters at the City Clerk's office. They've opened the facility for absentee ballot requests and basically early voting at Court Street. And that has gone extremely well. Many people have gone there in order to get absentee ballots and then to cast them. They will be open through Saturday, this coming Saturday. And therefore, and I just wanted to make it, I've seen how hard that they are working and I went down to the City Clerk's office, I think on Friday, and everybody didn't even, one person said, you know, we, we're not even looking up. We're just focusing on these ballots, trying to get them all processed. So I wanted to thank them all and congratulate them and on the good job that they've done so, so far. Madam President, there's another item that I did want to mention tonight, which is one that I am concerned about, which is the firefighters' proposed contract. Of course, I respect and I appreciate everything that the firefighters and the fire department has done for the city and does for the city. I see Tom Hooley, who's the President of the Union, as well as Steve Buxton, the Assistant Chief are on the, on the, the meeting tonight. And I'm sure they will speak to you or expect they will speak to you as well. But I believe that we, that we have a primary responsibility and maybe our first responsibility is to the hardworking taxpayers and residents of the city of Nashville. Now, I know that they want us to be fair to our employees, which I think is what we all want. We are facing three main challenges, big financial challenges right now. Number one, COVID and the lasting effects of that, we're not even aware of in terms of, we're not fully aware of. We don't know how this is going to play out exactly, but we know there will be a significant financial impact. Number two, we've been hit with a $4.4 million downshifting of pension costs by the state of Manhattan. That's come in the last few months. That, that alone would drive taxes up. And third, we have rising healthcare costs, $3 million a year, two, two years in a row. Now, these challenges are largely externally imposed on us, but we still need to try to work with them to create the budgets that our people deserve, which would, which deliver high-quality services at a, at a reasonable cost. The financial challenge of the healthcare costs is a solid, is a solid, soluble, solvable challenge. It's a serious challenge, but a solvable, solvable one. And you've asked us, you, the Board of Alderman, to work on a solution. And we have come up with one that at a minimum can reduce the rate of increase and possibly stabilize the cost of healthcare to the city and really to employees for a period for into the years, years that are coming. And what we've, the, the solution that we have come up with is to require, is, is to require some changes in the plan design of the healthcare that is offered to city employees, mostly having to do with deductibles. And we could talk about the details later on and you've heard them already. And if we do this, we can save a lot of money for, for the city and for taxpayers and for employees because their weekly rates will go down. But we need to implement that solution. And we've done it with two employee groups so far, the unaffiliated workers and last night with the communication workers at the police department. But in order to make this solution work, the Board of Alderman has to require that these changes be in all contracts, all labor contracts, no exclusions, no exceptions, because exceptions will grow and grow and grow. Now, I was disappointed that, starting about last December, the Fire Commission, you know, stopped working with the city's finance team regarding this negotiation. I think if they had worked with us, we could have come to an agreement with the firefighters that everyone could live with. One thing that I am disappointed about in terms of what's been proposed is that the healthcare changes which we have asked for were not, are not included in the contract. Contracts like this could result in unsustainable budgets. We've got to get these healthcare costs under control and unsustainable budgets mean either higher taxes or reduced services or both. I wish the Fire Commission had worked with us. We try, and I have expressed this point of view to them directly. We've tried to reach out to them, tried to get their cooperation, but that didn't occur. In any event, I will be discussing this in more detail with the Budget Committee. I, I, I believe we, and, and just before I conclude on this subject, it's not like the firefighters that we think that they shouldn't get, you know, a raise. Before the Fire Commission started, stopped cooperating with us, we, this offered 11% raise, you know, pretty reasonable, maybe, I, I think pretty generous. People could say maybe it's not enough under the circumstances, but still, certainly a lot more than, than nothing. A pretty good raise, more than many employees in the city have gotten. So we're trying to reach an agreement, but this healthcare issue is very, very, very important. Thank you for that, listening on that, Madam President. Finally, I wanted to say that at the Finance Committee, I wanted to remind people that we began, we approved contracts to begin the implementation of the Riverfront Master Plan. This is something I know that we're all very interested in and excited about. Of course, the river is a natural asset that is very valuable to the city and we are, we are beginning to develop it so that, to beautify it and make it so that people can use the river and enjoy the river to a much greater degree than they haven't, have been able to do in the past. So this lighting project that was approved will provide lighting for the river walks and the Cotton Transfer Bridge. And I'm just very happy that we are moving forward in, beginning with the implementation. In any event, that's all I have, Madam President, unless people have questions for me.
Thank you, Mayor. Response to remarks of the mayor. Anyone? Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I just want to respond in regards to the firefighters' contract. I was very proud to support this contract. I supported the last one. I think the fire union has really made some concessions in this one. And I think that enough is enough. I think it's time, it's been over a year. They haven't had a contract, almost a year and a half. I think enough is enough. We need to move this one forward. I encourage my colleagues to please cosponsor this if you believe in it. Because these men and women have been working night and day for this city without a contract and they do it without hesitation. So I would recommend that we try to move this forward and, you know, I understand the mayor's concerns about the healthcare. But the bottom line is we need to walk and chew gum at the same time. And, you know, it comes very hard to justify doing things like the Performing Arts Center and a lot of the other projects like the Riverfront and things like that, when at the same token, some of us refuse to pay our employees a decent wage and give them a contract that they deserve. And I think that it's high time that we move this forward. Thank you.
Anyone else? Response to the remarks of Mayor. Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, I just wanted to recognize that the efforts that were made both on the city side and the fire department. I think what was presented as we all received initial copies. I think it looks, there's a lot of work has been done on it and I think it's that throughout all of that work that was being done, the firefighters continue to, to show up and do their job and respond to fires in, in extremely professional and timely manner. So I appreciate that work. I am looking forward to seeing a deeper dive breakdown into this to understand all of the perspectives involved. And then additionally, with regards to other people that are working night and day, I just wanted to point out to the mayor, he might be being a little too harsh with the City Clerk's office, voting, working on all the voting registration, because it may not have a lot of time to look up and for some people it takes longer to look up. So there is that.
Anyone else? Okay. Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the Board of Alderman meeting of October 13, 2020 accepted, placed on file and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, regarding communications received from the public.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board on anything we're going to take action on this evening? Seeing none. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Kim Kleiner, Administrative Services Director, regarding coronavirus disease, COVID-19 policy amendment.
Alderman Lou. Alderwoman Lou.
Uh, okay, um. Was there an outline that went out?
Yeah, we're looking for motion to accept and approve the coronavirus disease, COVID-19 policy amendment as outlined in Director Kleiner's memo dated October 19, 2020. By roll call?
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws. Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Milcher.
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and 0 nays.
And that motion carries.
Madam President, may I take a moment of your time for the, for an item to be discussed for the betterment of the group, if I may please?
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. In the point where you asked the question, if anybody in the public had a comment, I thought Union President Thomas Hooley may have had his hand up. And I just wonder if it's possible for you, if he so wishes to speak, if you could go back to him, if you can give him that indulgence.
Well, if he wants to speak on the contract, we're not taking action on that this evening. He can speak at the second comment period.
All right, very good. Thank you for that.
Because we're not taking action on it tonight.
Very good. I did, Madam President, like I said, I thought I just saw his hand was up. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk? I think we lost that clerk. I know she's busy. Donna, are you on?
I am.
Could you read the next motion for us?
Absolutely. Communication received from David Fredette, Treasurer, Tax Collector, regarding purchase replacement for one 2019 Ford F-350 pickup, vehicle ID number 638, from FY 2021 Capital Equipment Reserve Fund, SURF.
And I'm back on. President Milcher, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I would move to approve the purchase as outlined.
Alderman Clemmons makes a motion to approve the purchase of a 2020 Ford F-350 XL four-wheel-drive cab pickup truck for the Park and Rec Department. This vehicle will replace the 2019 Ford F-350 pickup truck, ID 638, which was totaled in a recent accident. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Jenny.
Yeah, I'd just like to ask, i- is this the same vehicle that was, that was reported to us that was totaled or are there two or three vehicles that have been totaled? Are we having a rash of, of accidents?
I can't answer that. Mayor Donches, are you able to answer that question? Okay.
Madam President?
Mayor Donches.
Wait, let me just get Tredya off mute. All right, now, what, the question has to do with the vehicle, right?
Correct.
We, well, first, we just need to be, it needs to be placed on file and if you wish, approve the recommendation.
Well, the question was, did, did we have multiple vehicle accidents? Because I think we just approved one of these at our last meeting or two meetings ago.
Well, this is the same one that the Finance Committee voted on just last week. So the Finance Committee approved or recommended to you the approval of this because of this accident. And that was just last, and that just occurred last week.
Okay.
So, Madam President?
The question.
So Mayor, the, the question is, i- is this just one vehicle that was in an accident that we're replacing or have there been more than one? It seems like, you know, it, it seems like we've, we've talked about two or three vehicles. Maybe it's the same vehicle. I don't know. That's what I'm asking. Have we had one vehicle totaled or have there been three?
This is one. I mean, this is just one vehicle. There have certainly been other vehicles in the past, yes. There've been other accidents in the past.
And by the past, the recent past? Seems like there was a police vehicle.
There might, I think there was a second accident in the recent past, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Lou.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. So there was one for Parks and Rec and then there was a police vehicle. And i- if that helps recall what this is from, perhaps someone knows what department it was in? And the other question I have would be, was there a, was there an insurance? The, sorry. Have we collected any insurance on that accident? Does anyone know that?
I do not. Mayor, you're on mute.
We have definitely collected insurance. I think the numbers are the repurchase is 38,000 and I think we got 35,000 in, in an insurance recovery. I believe those are the correct figures.
Yeah. Okay. Back to the motion. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Would the clerks please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Milcher.
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and 0 nays.
And that motion carries.
Madam President, in the answer, I was looking back to the minutes and the like. There have been two vehicles. There was this one and then there was a police vehicle that was totaled, you know, a month or six weeks ago, but, so there have been two recent accidents.
Thank you, Mayor. Petitions.
There are none.
Nominations, appointments and elections.
To the Honorable Board of Alderman, I have this day appointed Bob James of 22 Falga Square, Suite 101 Nashua, to the Master Plan Committee and respectfully request that this appointment be confirmed.
There being no objection, I will accept that the appointment by the mayor is read and refer it to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I will declare the report of the October 14, 2020 Human Affairs Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the October 19, 2020 Penachuck Water Special Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the October 21, 2020 Finance Committee, accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
There are none.
Unfinished business resolutions?
Second reading of resolution R 2073, authorizing the mayor to enter into pilot agreement pursuant to RSA 7274 with Penachuck Waterworks, Inc.
Alderman Laws.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to amend R 2073 by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy. Amendments made at the Penachuck Special Water Committee by roll call. And I could speak to that, but I think it'd probably be a more efficient use of time if we had Corporation Counsel do it. Since he was involved in this. Thank you, Madam President.
The amendment makes no substantive change. It just rewords the formula for
the formula for determining what the pilot amount, pilot means payment in lieu of taxes, the pilot amount will be. It doesn't change the formula, but it tries to make it a little more clear. And essentially, what we're doing is we're saying you won't be taxed on the solar facilities. You'll pay the same amount of taxes as if the solar facilities were not there.
Thank you, Attorney Bolton. The motion is to amend by placing, replacing R-2073 with the Goldenrod copy. Further discussion on the motion to amend. Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to ask Corporate Counsel, I believe that it is the same thing. This pilot keeping the, the value or so on, to be excluding the, the solar panels. That's somewhat with residential property, is it not? For those people that put solar panels on their homes, we, we didn't add that to the taxable assessed value. Is that correct?
It accomplishes a very similar thing. It's a different means of accomplishing that.
Okay, I think I just wanted to clarify that for the viewing public.
Any more discussion on the motion to amend? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws. President Wiltshire, did you hear Alderman Laws?
I, no, he's, he's on mute.
Madam President, I don't know if I got skipped, but I just got booted and back in, so. It's my turn to vote.
Yes, your turn.
Alderman Laws. Yes.
I didn't hear.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Alderman Laws. Alderman Laws?
Okay, sorry, it keeps dropping me. I move for final passage of R-2073 as amended by roll call. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Resolution 2073 is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of Resolution R-2074, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of eight-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-five-hundred dollars from the United States Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration, into transit grant activity, Buses and Bus Facilities Grant Program.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion for final passage of R-20-074 by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Oh, seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Resolution 2074 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R-2075, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of an additional seven-thousand-sixty dollars and fifty-three cents from the State of New Hampshire Department of Transportation into DPW grant activity, Safe Routes to School, Charlotte Avenue.
Alderman Cle.
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to, motion for final passage of R-20-075 by roll call, please.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2075 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R-2078, authorizing Penachuck Corporation to renew and extend its line of credit with TD Bank, N.A.
Alderman Cleaver. Alderman Cleaver?
Yes, I move for final passage of R-20-78 by roll call.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2078 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R-2079, authorizing Penachuck Corporation and Penachuck Waterworks, Inc., to issue bonds and renew its fixed asset line of credit with TD Bank, N.A.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-20-079 by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2079 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
There are none.
New business resolutions.
First reading of Resolution R-2082, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of eight-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars from the United States Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration to establish a CARES Act revolving loan fund.
Additional sponsors.
Madam President?
Alderman, Alderman Karen, Alderman Cle, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Cleaver, and myself.
Alderman Laws, please.
Alderman Laws. Okay, given its first reading, I will assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
Alderman Lou, please.
Alderman Lou.
First reading of Resolution R-2083, authorizing the acquisition of property at Thirty-Six Buck Middle Road, Tax Map C, Lot 762, for a purchase price of three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Cle. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Lou, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Harriet Gathright, and myself. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee and the National Planning Board.
First reading of Resolution R-2084, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of thirty-thousand dollars from the Crease Foundation into Public Health and Community Services Grant Activity, Advancing Public Health in Communities.
Additional sponsors.
Madam President?
Alderman Karen.
Thank you.
Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Lou, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Harriet Gathright, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
And Madam President, Alderman O'Brien as well, please.
No, and Alderman O'Brien, thank you.
First reading of Resolution R-2085, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of fifty-eight-thousand dollars from the State of New Hampshire Department of Justice into Police Grant Activity, 2021 Violence Against Women Act, VAWA, Grant Program, and to authorize the transfer of matching funds.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Cle, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Karen.
Thank you.
Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez. You guys are funny. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Alderman Laws, and myself. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution R-2086, relative to the acceptance of donated services in the amount of approximately a hundred-and-forty-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars for the purpose of providing cellular phone services for law enforcement purposes.
Additional sponsors.
Madam President?
Alderman Karen, Alderman O'Brien. I didn't catch that one. Alderman Dowd, Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Cle, Alderman Cleaver, and myself. Oh, and Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you.
Yep. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R-2087, relative to the assignment of the Community Development Finance Authority Grant, accepted by Resolution R-20002.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Harriet Gathright, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution R-2088, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the mayor and the Board of Fire Commissioners of the City of Nashville, New Hampshire, and Local 789 International Association of Firefighters from July first, twenty nineteen, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and authorizing a related transfer.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Cle, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Cleaver, and myself. Alderman Laws, and myself. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Budget Review Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of Ordinance O-2033, replacing Corporation Counsel with the Administrative Services Division Director on the Cable Television Advisory Board, CTAP.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Cle, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel, Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of Ordinance O-2034, extending temporary adjustments to site plans to allow for greater outdoor seating at restaurants.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Cle, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Laws, Alderman Cleaver. Did I miss anyone? And myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee, the National Planning Board, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on November seventeenth, twenty twenty, at seven P.M. So we've come down now to the period for public comment. Anyone from the public wish to address the board?
I do. This is Beth Scare.
Okay, I had someone raise their hand. Hold on a minute, Beth. Tom Hooly?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, good evening. This is Thomas Hooly, President of Nashville Firefighters Local 789. I just want to thank the board for this evening and taking the first read. And at our contract, I was negotiating good faith on both sides, not only the, what the firefight is, and working with the administration, and also with the city. I appreciate all the sponsors tonight. It was a pleasure speaking to all those that I've been able to reach out to. I hope you found your packets that were mailed to you from our union well, and able to break this contract down and have pertinent information in front of you. I just want to say that moving into budget, I'm very hopeful that it'll come out of there and come to the final reading and get your full support of this board. I appreciate the mayor's concerns with the citizens of this community. We share the same concerns. We're on the front lines for the City of Nashville, protecting this community proudly. We've made concessions in this contract from the first TA that was, that was before you. We took four percent off of COLAS, bringing us down four years, ten percent. We've recognized healthcare. I just want to point out, in two thousand nineteen, when this contract was first started to negotiate, healthcare was not an issue. We are understanding the coming of times. We're the first union to adopt health savings account language in our, in our contract, and that was to address the concerns for the taxpayer in the healthcare costs. Like I said, I appreciate your time this evening. I look forward to this contract, moving through the process, the next budget meeting, speaking again on it. And if any of you have any questions or concerns, please contact myself. And I just all want to note that the hundred-and-sixty-plus union members, the firefighters that serve this community proudly, that have risen to the occasion during this pandemic, the previous epidemic, I'm their voice tonight, and I'll be their voice all the way through this. This is not just about paying employees. This is about families and supporting your firefighters. So thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Beth Scare?
Oh, hi, did you call me? I'm sorry.
I did. Name and address for the record, please.
Beth Scare, One-eleven East Tobart Street. I'm calling in because Alderman Jan Schmidt posted on her Facebook page a poll in front of City Hall's reserved for the citizens of Nashville to fly a flag in support of their cultural heritage, observe an anniversary, or honor a special accomplishment. Beth's hate flag does not fit any of these requirements. I'm, I'm flattered that Alderman Schmidt wrote about me and my Save Women's Sports flag, but I wanted to let her know that my Save Women's Sports flag is not about hate, it's about love and concern for our female athletes and their right to have their own sport separate from men. And I was, the flag was flown to support a fundraiser for Save Women's Sports, and it was supposed to fly all week to call attention to this fundraiser and celebrate it, and celebrate Selena Sewell. and celebrate it and celebrate Selena Sewell, who lost her competition to two men in the Connecticut Championship. So thank you, Jan Schmidt, for calling attention to my flag, and I appreciate the attention. Thanks. Bye.
Anyone else wishing to give public comment this evening? Okay, I don't see anyone with a hand raised, so I'm going to move on. Remarks by members of the Board of Aldermen. Alderman Dow. You're on mute, Alderman Dow.
Okay, sorry. Three quick things. One, I had done a presentation on the acquisition of land for the new middle school, and the people that are on the joint special got it. I will be sending that to all the other members, so they'll have the information on all the details on the purchase and sale. And I think you'll find that very interesting, and we'll be discussing that in the committees that it was assigned to. One thing I want to say about the contracts that have been coming through lately. A big chunk of the expense that is a flow-down from the state on the pension plans, which we have no control over, and unfortunately, we get stuck with the bill. We've had too many things coming down from the state, which, based on the governor's wording, I consider that a tax, and it's adding to people's property taxes. So hopefully, we can get that fixed. The other thing is Charlotte Avenue is undergoing the Safe Roots to Schools. We passed that additional funding since the bids were a little higher, so that's all taken care of. That is presumably, if the weather cooperates, will all be done before the voting next week. The paving is scheduled for Thursday. Keep our fingers crossed. And that's on the sidewalks and the bump-out. And the new, they have extended the corner, so it's a right turn now rather than the than just the bend between Charlotte Street and Charlotte Avenue to slow the traffic down. The speed indicators, the solar speed indicators may go in this year or may go in the spring. Again, depends on the weather. They're the last things to go on in the project. And it is a federal project, so we have a little say, but a lot of the control is federal. But it's going to make it 100% safer for those kids in that neighborhood going to school. Thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I hope I can be afforded this personal privilege. I would like to make note of the fact that, I wanted to say this at the last meeting, but it went too long, and I didn't think it was appropriate. But I wanted to make note of the fact that 50 years ago, on September 18, I was admitted to practice law in the state of New Hampshire. That was 1970. And I, I think it's back then, we had it was the height of the Vietnam War. The United States invaded Cambodia. There was a big protest about it. Kent State had a big protest and the there was the unfortunate killing of some students by the Ohio National Guard. That resulted in a much larger protest nationwide. A lot of the schools were closed, including the law school that I was attending, Boston College. So my graduation from law school was canceled because of that protest. And it's kind of ironic that 50 years later, when I'm celebrating my 50th anniversary, the dinner that was planned by the New Hampshire Bar Association to honor all of our, all of the, me and the other lawyers who were celebrating our 50 years, was canceled because of COVID. So it's ironic or appropriate, depending on your point of view. But I wanted to have the opportunity to make note of that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. Well, congratulations, Alderman Jettie, on 50 years of public service. I'm sure that you've helped a lot of people along the way, and you continue to do so through that and your service as an Alderman. So thank you. I just wanted to wish everybody a safe and happy Halloween before for this Saturday. Please make sure that you're doing everything and following the guidelines. And this hopefully will be an opportunity where wearing a mask won't be a problem because it's Halloween. So in any case, the other thing I wanted to just bring up was make sure that if you have not already, please go and vote. You can register right at the polls on Election Day and just bring a photo ID. And, you know, we're getting great turnout in the city, so, you know, we've, city clerk is doing an awesome job. And we, you know, we hope that everything will go smoothly on Election Day. But really, if you haven't got a chance to go and vote or send an absentee, and please do that on November 3rd. One thing, Ward 6, the voting has changed. It's not at the middle school, but it's at the elementary school. So again, happy Halloween, everyone, and don't forget to vote.
Alderman Lopez.
First, I want to say congratulations to Alderman Jettie, both for 50 years as a lawyer. And I would probably have put you as just over 50, so you're doing something right with the old skincare or whatever. So congratulations to that. I also wanted to comment, I've had a lot of constituent outreach recently regarding the the Court Street Theater, and I just want to assure the public that we are continuing on that project. There's a number of city improvements that are being made to it. They've just been slowed down a little bit with the COVID-19. I know Alderman Clemmons and I are working on encouraging strategic planning with that particular site, and the mayor is supportive. So we are still working on that. I also wanted to encourage people to vote. I wanted to encourage them to be kind and considerate of their fellow voters and the polling workers because this is a very, very unusual time to be working in the polls. A lot of our poll workers have stepped forward in, out of concern for some of our more legacy poll workers who are trying to practice safety due to COVID-19. So there's going to be some people who are, you know, eager and energetic, but they've never really seen this in practice. We have a lot of really good leaders that are organizing for these unique set of circumstances. I know that the city clerk's department has been, you know, burning the midnight oil and then some to try to be as prepared for this as possible. And I just want to remind everyone that as usual, the NTS is providing free transportation for people to the polls who need to be able to get to it. Thank you.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I feel at this point I'm kind of doing a lot of me, too. But I'd like to start by thanking Alderman Dowd and those that were involved in the the acquisition of the land by the school. I know there's been a lot of work. I know there's still a lot more to do. But I appreciate all the hard work and the diligence that's been on that. I also like to thank Alderman Dowd for all of the information he's been giving to us at the JSSBC on fairgrounds and all the changes. And I know he's been working towards Pennachuck and the entrance and exit and so on. It's been a lot of work, and I know it's almost daily for him. So I really appreciate all of that work that he has been doing on that. As far as Charlotte Ave is concerned, I drive through there a lot, and I'm noticing the change daily. And I think it's going to be a nice, safe, once it's completed and so on. I'd also like to kind of speak to the elections and to our incredible city clerk. The Court Street change and things, I have been getting so many compliments for all the workers that have been there, for the fact that we've done this. They've made it easy. I know registration has stopped until the day of the election, but it makes me so proud with every time I get a phone call to say what a great job we're doing, and I haven't done anything. So I take the compliment for her, and I appreciate all the wonderful work she does so that I get these compliments. The other thing is, I do want to mention, as others have said, especially Alderman Dowd made a comment about the changes in the state's retirement and so on. Elections matter. And there are people that are running that were actually responsible for us having as big a chunk of that retirement now. So it is important. It's important to get out there and vote. And while I do care who you vote for, get out and vote. I mean, that's the most important thing. And I'm glad to see the firefighters have worked on the contract. I look forward to hearing more about it at the budget hearings. And I appreciate their coming through. And yes, happy Halloween to all of them. I'm one of those people that have been vacillating. Do I give out candy? Don't I give out candy? I think we've worked something out where we're going to put tables and individual candies, and hopefully the kids will come up, and then we'll run up and refill our little holes in the tables in the driveway. So please just be safe. Don't all run up at the same time. And I know the parents in my neighborhood, they stay with their kids, but this time it's more important than ever before to keep your children safe. So thank you so much for giving me this time.
You bet. Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to share that the Board of Health has expressed great concern with the increase in COVID and with the change in the weather. And they have, at their last meeting, they decided to to get information out regarding parents choosing an alternative to going house-to-house trick-or-treating. So I just wanted to pass that on, that they're encouraging people to come up with alternatives where there's a smaller number of people interacting. And they're just very concerned that people are not considering the the danger of this particular holiday. So I wanted to share that they've posted on their website ideas, creative ideas for other things to do with your children to celebrate the holiday. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none. I wanted to also speak to the city clerk and the work they've been doing to prepare for the election. I know that the amount of absentee ballots they've had to process is immense. I mean, just so many that I don't know how they're keeping up. I also want to ask the people that do go out and vote, and I hope it's every one of you, everyone listening, everyone in the city, to be kind and be patient. I think there's going to be quite a turnout and trying to keep people socially distanced and with masks on. It's going to be a little bit of a challenge for the poll workers, so I would ask that you please be patient and be kind to your fellow voters. Also, I've heard a lot of feedback on the Court Street dropping off the ballots there, and that people really, really appreciated that. So thank you for that, Madam Clerk. I also want to send my condolences to the family of Joe Walsh. Joe Walsh ran a mental health business here in the city, and Joe passed away over the weekend. So I just wanted to send my condolences to his family. Committee announcements. Alderman O'Brien. One moment, Alderman Karen.
I'll yield that first to Alderman Karen. I think we should talk about the same thing, and then I'll speak afterwards. Thank you, Madam President.
You're a troublemaker, Mike. Alderman Karen.
Thank you. When you said his name, I figured that's what he was going to say. So first of all, personnel will be meeting tomorrow at 6:30 to go over the mayor's new appointment to some committees. And then we will be meeting jointly with Alderman O'Brien Committee Infrastructure to talk about the parking fines for overnight parking. And that's tomorrow.
Thank you. Alderman O'Brien.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. We're very excited to be hosting a joint meeting with the Personal Affairs Committee, Administrative Affairs Committee tomorrow night, 7:00 P.M. It is going to be on the parking. And for an extra bonus, if you really need it, we're going to have a brief presentation from Sarah Marsh on going over the Heritage Rail Trail. And time is getting, you know, pretty close because next month we've got Thanksgiving. So I hope some indulgence allowed it to be presented, that maybe we can free ourselves up for some turkey. And then I also would like to say, let's be careful during the wishing hour, I know with COVID, but also driving home, that's when the kids are out. So please be careful. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other committee announcements? Seeing none. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the October 27, 2020 meeting of the Board of Aldmen be adjourned by roll call.
Motion is to adjourn. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver. Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wulcher.
Yes.
I did not record Alderman Cleaver, President Wulcher, so I see 13 yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. And that motion carries. We are adjourned at 8:36 P.M. Thank you, everyone.